Perfect. Okay, well, welcome and thank you all for being here. Welcome to the draft amendment to the Citizen Participation Plan, also known as the CPP. So here on behalf of the California Department of Housing and Community Development, within the Division of Federal Financial Assistance, we thank you for attending and for your continued partnership here. So we are here today because we are amending our CPP to have the most updated citizen participation guidelines. And this is also in preparation of the upcoming five-year consolidated plan that we are implementing for fiscal years 2025 through 2029. So this updated CPP will be the guide for this plan and also for other federal plans moving forward. And we will explain that in more detail throughout this presentation. So thank you again for being here. We appreciate your time. The next slide, please. Okay, so now I'll just go over a few housekeeping items. So all of your participant lines have been automatically set to mute and camera off. For any questions or comments, please use the raise hand feature, which is located at the bottom of your screen, and we will address your question in a timely manner. And with that, you can also use the chat feature, which is also located at the bottom of your screen. And then comments on the CPP will be saved as public record, and we will provide the email address to send those to later in this presentation. So we will also periodically pause for questions or comments, and we will have a specific time at the end of the presentation for this as well. And then there is also a call-in option to join this meeting if you prefer, and the information for that is found on the meeting invite. And as I mentioned in the first slide, this is being recorded for purposes of being available to you later. So that recording, along with the slides, in a PDF format, will be available a few days after this presentation for you. And then lastly, if you would like the closed captioning turned on, you can click on the icon at the bottom of your screen to show captions. Next slide, please. Okay, so here are the list of presenters that will be presenting certain parts of this presentation today. So first, we have Fareed Barzai, who is our HUD reporting representative. We have Amber Lee Leslie, who is an HCD specialist too, within the Fair Housing Unit. We have Crystal White, who is our CDBG program specialist. And we have Tim Coop-Whitley, who is also a HUD reporting representative. Next slide. All right, and so the agenda for today, we're going to start with a Citizen Participation Plan introduction and background. And then we're going to roll into the State Citizen Participation Requirement section and what we've updated in that section. And then we will go into the Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing with the updates to that section. And then we'll go into the Citizen Participation Requirements for local governments within the CDBG program. And lastly, we'll cover the appendices and resources. And so I will pass it over to Fareed to talk about the introduction and background.
Thank you, Chelsea. And hi, everyone. Welcome once again, everyone, to discussion on the Citizen Participation Plan, commonly referred to as CPP. The CPP is a critical framework established by the Department of Housing and Community Development. Its primary purpose is to outline how citizens and various stakeholders can participate in the planning and implementation of federally funded programs. The Citizen Participation Plan, or CPP, outlines the process by which the state of California ensures public involvement in the planning, development, and implementation of the consolidated plan or CONPLAN and related activities. The CONPLAN includes federal programs such as Community Development Block Grants, CDBG Home Investment Partnership Program, or HOME, Emergency Solution Grants, ESG, National Health and Trust Fund, NHDF, and Housing Opportunity for Persons with AIDS, or OPWA. The CPP is designed to provide transparent process for public input, ensures equitable participation, and addresses our community needs. And next slide, please. In this section, we will cover the key amendments made to the Citizen Participation Plan and how they enhance our engagement process. Since the last update in 2020, we have focused on making the participation process more accessible and inclusive, especially under the evolving challenges of the COVID-19 pandemic. We have incorporated provisions for virtual public hearing, ensure participation remains uninterrupted regardless of physical meeting constraints. This ensures continued community inputs during the during times when in-person gatherings are not possible. We have made intensive efforts to accommodate non-English speaking residents and persons with disabilities at all public hearings, reflecting our commitment to inclusivity. The new plan includes detailed mechanism for documenting, responding to, and integrating public feedback into our final planning documents, ensuring transparency and accountability in how public input shapes our programs. So with that, I will pass on back to Chelsea. Thank you.
Thank you, Fareed. Okay, so now we will talk about the State Citizen Participation Requirement Section. And then we will start with the applicability and what federal plans are applicable to this section. So within that section of the State Citizen Participation Requirements of the CPP, so consolidated plans, annual action plans, other action plans for special appropriations, special allocations, and one-time grant awards for community planning and development programs, all must adhere to the State Citizen Participation Requirements that are set forth in the Title 24 Code of Federal Regulations, specifically Part 91. So what that means is that all of these plans have to first follow the US Department of Housing and Urban Development, that we also call HUD. They have to follow those HUD regulations and then follow these requirements that are set forth in HCD's Citizen Participation Plan. And on this slide, there's a direct link to the HUD regulations that we follow in our Citizen Participation Plan. Next slide, please. Okay, so now we will discuss the updates that we made to the State Citizen Participation Section here. So I'll start with in the general category of the Consolidated Plan, Annual Action Plan, and Other Action Plans. We are adding some language in the required information in the proposed plans that include specifically other action plans for special appropriations, special allocations, and one-time grant awards. So we just added to include those special one-off allocations or one-time grant awards. For example, the price application that we submitted back in July to HUD. So some other updates to this section include the location of the public hearing. So we've added language to specify that public hearings may be conducted virtually or in person based on the needs of the citizens. And then also with that, if any attendee or participant of public hearings need special accommodations, HCD will accommodate these requests in every reasonable manner. And then also, HCD will accommodate needs of non-English speaking residents at all public hearings, both of those with advanced notification. And then we also added some, and we've added this language to pretty much every section here in this, the State Citizen Participation part of the plan. We've added that the applicability requirements also are applicable to action plans for special congressional appropriations, the special allocations, and those one-time grant awards. Next slide, please. All right, so again, so some more updates that we've added to the same section in Section B, specifically the amendments to the Consolidated Plan, Annual Action Plan, and Other Action Plans. Within the substantial amendment criteria, we updated language to substantially amend any changes to the method of distribution of funds that were not previously discussed in the Consolidated Plan. So if something wasn't already addressed in that five-year CONPLAN, we will be creating a substantial amendment if there are any changes to the method of distribution. Before, it was just for certain parts of the method of distribution, but now it's just for any changes. We've also added some applicability requirements, again, to the action plans for special congressional appropriations, the special allocations, and those one-time grant awards. So that's going to also be for the next section of the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, or our CAPR requirements. All right, next slide. Okay, and so wrapping up this section in Part D with the availability to the public, we have added that all of these plans and amendments are available upon request to the public and any interested party. And then we've also moved to a new location. So we've updated our HCD address to the 651 Bannon Street in Sacramento. And then lastly, in the Complaints Section E, we put some language in there for HCD to provide written response via electronic mail for any formal complaints within 15 business days. All right, and that concludes this section of the State Citizen Participation Requirements and what we changed in that section. So I'll go ahead and pass it over to Amber Lee to talk about the Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing Choice. It looks like your sound is not working, Amber Lee. Still no.
How about now?
Oh, perfect. There it is.
Okay, apologies for that. Once again, my name is Amber Lee Leslie. I'm a specialist here at HCD in the Fair Housing Unit, and we're supporting the federal reporting team on the Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing Choice, which we refer to as the AI. There are several considerations that go into the AI, and during the development, we consult with a wide variety of groups across the state that work in housing, but we also need feedback from the general public. So this is not just to meet federal requirements of the analysis, but to gain accurate insight from those working directly with the public and from the public themselves. Once this outreach has occurred and the draft AI is ready, it will be posted to the HCD website and will be available for public review and comment for 30 days. We'll send out an e-blast using our HCD listserv to anyone that signed up to that to let them know that the document is online and will strongly encourage comments to be made in written form, though we're not requiring that the comments be in written form. During this 30-day public comment period, we will hold at least one public hearing where people can also provide their comments so that it can be considered before the final AI is published. Next slide, please. We'll provide notice of the public hearing at least 14 days in advance of the meeting using several methods we're listing here, at least using an e-blast, using the HCD lister. Our public hearings may be an in-person event or it may be held virtually. We'll document all comments that are made during the hearing. And there's a section in the final version of the Analysis of Impediments where you'll see all the comments that were made during these 30 days. And you'll also see HCD's response to all of those comments, those public comments. It might say that the suggestion was incorporated into the AI, or it might say that it wasn't. Either way, we will have an explanation. Everyone is welcome. And if there are any additional accommodations needed, like if someone is a non-English speaker or if they have an accessibility need, they can reach out to us and we'll do everything we can to meet their request. There will also be information in our announcements about the hearing that will let you know how to reach out to us and request accommodations. If you feel that there is something you dislike about the Citizen Participation Plan for the AI, you can let us know by providing your complaint in writing to HCD's director. For example, you may have an issue with our options for submitting draft comments, or perhaps you have a complaint about how we provide notice of our hearing. So HCD will respond in writing within 15 working days, when practical, to any of those types of complaints that we receive. Next, Crystal is going to go over requirements for local governments receiving CDBG funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Amber. I'm Crystal White, a specialist with the CDBG program. And I'll share with you a general overview of the Citizen Participation Requirements that are specific to the Community Development Block Grant, also known as CDBG funds. So my perspective is from program to grantee, and the Citizen Participation Requirements are for units of local governments receiving CDBG. And the requirements are established on established on how to engage the public in the application and administration of CDBG funding. So the CPP requirements for CDBG fall under five broad areas: public participation targeting, reasonable and timely access, public meetings, public participation, and technical assistance. So with public participation targeting, jurisdictions, grantees must actively have active processes that target and encourage participation by low-mob income groups and residents of neighborhoods with high concentrations of housing and community development needs. So targeting may include, but is not limited to, additional public noticing, coordination with housing authorities, public community service agencies, or nonprofit service providers, public notification via bulletin board or other public notice venues, or other targeted approaches. And next slide, please. With reasonably, with reasonable and timely access, grantees must provide residents must provide that residents will be given reasonable and timely access to local meetings, reasonable advance notice of public meetings held at times and in accessible locations that are convenient to potential or actual beneficiaries with accommodations for persons with disabilities. It includes that public meetings will be conducted in a manner to meet the needs of non-English speaker residents where a significant number of non-English speaking residents can reasonably be expected to participate. It includes public notices and public meetings must identify a means for written comments and complaints to be submitted to the unit of local government. Next slide, please. With public meetings, in general, public meetings will be designed to facilitate attendance by potential and actual beneficiaries and to ensure accommodations for persons with disabilities. It may be conducted virtually or in person. Public information. Residents will be provided information on the amount of CDBG funds and activities expected to be made available for the current fiscal year, including the grant and anticipated program income. Finally, technical assistance for low-mob income groups. Technical assistance to groups that are representative of persons of low and moderate income that request assistance in developing proposals for CDBG-funded activities. That summarizes the Citizen Participation Requirements for CDBG. And I'll go ahead and hand off to Tim now. Tim?
Hello, everyone. Thank you, Crystal. So next slide, please. So what you see on your screen here is our Appendix A, which is the Public Comment Matrix Report. And just so everybody here knows, this report is already existing included in our Citizen Participation Plan. And so we just wanted to note it here just for those who may not have seen this before. So but this is standard for our CPP plan. And so any comments that are received from the public during the 30-day public comment period are placed on this matrix report. And so we do list the commenter, where they are from, where they're located, their contact email address, and what type of comments they had made about this amendment. And so and then HCD will review all of those comments received within the public comment period. And we will note at the end, as indicated, if the comment is accepted or rejected, and if rejected, the reason why. So again, this was already in our plan, but I just wanted to include this. And any comments received will be reflected and available on our website once everything, all comments have been reviewed. Next slide. And finally, this is something that is a new addition to this amendment to the CPP. This is our Appendix B, which is the form of notice for all plans. And so we do try to see what other states do similarly for this process. And so we actually, HCD compiled some information to include with this amendment for the CPP. And so you can see on your screen the different types of plans and the requirements that are due for, such as public hearings. If there is a one required or two, you can see most of the plans and reports do require at least one. However, for the consolidated plan, there are two that are required. Next, you'll see the comment period for the particular plan. If it's 30 days, some cases, some places, some comment periods are only 15. We do have expedited comment periods, which can be a five-day period. So you can see here the different requirements for that. Next, in the next column, you can see the HUD submission timeline. And so most of the time, you can see it's no later than 45 days to start of the next program year. However, depending upon the report or plan, that might change as well. And then lastly, the form of notice that we notify the public for these plans and reports. HCD will notify in newspapers. We'll also send an email blast to all of our stakeholders, notifying them of the amendment or the report, whichever it may be. And then also, we post this to our main website as well. So this is something that I think will be useful for a lot of people going forward. And if you have any questions about the type of report or plan and what is required by HUD in order to execute that amendment or plan, this is a helpful guide to refer to as well. Okay, next slide. Okay, so this is the section where we welcome any questions from you all, any comments, any feedback on this particular amendment that we are presenting today. And so it looks like we have one comment here. Yes, Marilyn, so you can, the slides will be available on our main website probably within the week, I would say. They'll be in PDF format. And so just keep a lookout for on our website for when those will be posted. Okay, if someone wants to, you can come off. If someone wants to make a comment or a question or provide any feedback and you'd like to speak, you definitely can. Please use the raise hand feature. You can also type your comment or question in the chat. So we just want to give just a minute or two if anybody wants to do that right now. Can we go back to TA for applications? Let's see. I'm not quite sure of the nature of your question, Kristin. Did you want to come off mute and maybe explain?
Hi, yeah. It was a couple slides ago. I just missed the last point. And it said something about providing technical assistance to groups of sort of low-income persons in developing their CDBG applications. So is it saying that, this is saying that when my county receives CDBG funding, I don't understand, I don't understand how that impacts me. As a recipient of CDBG funding, am I supposed to find groups that need to make applications? Or, yeah?
I can go ahead and take that for you. That's for the CDBG program. And the technical assistance works both ways. So if you were to have a low-mob income group that approached you or a nonprofit that approached you for a potential project or activity, you would be required to provide them technical assistance on if you were going to take up that application, right? You would be, you would have to bring them along with you and help them understand the regulation. And in turn, technical assistance is also what the CDBG program will provide to our grantees who are our customers. We will assist you with technical assistance to be able to assist your grantees, right? Your contractors with how to implement that particular program. So you aren't looking for any, per se, it's more of who approaches you and how you can get assistance.
Okay, thanks very much.
You're welcome.
Great. Thank you, Kristin, for that question. And thank you, Crystal. All right, anybody else? Comments, questions? You can put in the chat if you'd like. Raise your hand. Okay, looks like, looks like nobody else. Last call? Okay, we'll have some more opportunities at the very end as well. And we'll cover how to additionally provide any comments or questions going forward. So thank you for that. All right, so now for our public comments and questions, the draft 2024 CPP Amendment is available on our website now. And if you go to the chat box, actually, the link, direct link to that amendment document is in our chat box here. So if you'd like a direct link, it is available now, also available on the screen in front of you. It is available on our website now. Our public comment period is for 30 days, and the period started on Monday, October 14th, and will go through November 14th for any comments on this amendment. So comments can be provided in any form that is convenient. It can be in writing to our HCD address located on Bannon Street in Sacramento. You can provide comments, questions, feedback also by email. Our email address listed here is consolidatedplan@hcd.ca.gov. And if you'd like to provide comments by phone, any questions, you can do that to the number listed here on the bottom. Okay, next slide. So again, some resources for you to use after this presentation. Again, the direct link to the Citizen Participation Plan Amendment is on your Um, again, the uh direct link to the Citizen Participation Plan Amendment is on your screen here and also in the chat. Um, if you click on the federal plans and reports and you, and then locate under federal reports, citizen participation requirements, um you will find um the information and link about this proposed amendment to the CPP. Okay, next slide. Uh, some more resources, more resources for you, um more links provided off of our web webpage, our HCD active programs, um our comments and uh questions, feedback email once again, which is consolidatedplan@hcd.ca.gov. Um, and we we do accept um those emails all the way up through five o'clock um on November fourteenth, which is the last day of the public comment period. So if you know someone or uh if you are kind of waiting to see if you'd like to provide any comments or feedback, you will have up until that time. So no pressure to do it right now. And then additionally, um we have our email signup. Um, if you're not uh signed up for our emails already, or if you know someone who would like to, um that link is available for you there as well. Okay, next slide. Oh, I'm sorry. We're going to pause for one second. We have a, we have Chelsea. He would like to say something.
Thank you. Apologies for um, you know, for interrupting here. But I I did also want to add, um this is kind of fitting in maybe the resources section. So something just additional, but it's not specifically related to the CPP, but it is related to the consolidated plan that does fall under the CPP. Um, I just wanted to mention here on this platform that we have some surveys available, and they're open until Sunday, November ten. Um, I'm gonna put this information in the chat. So basically, what we are doing right now is we are creating a new five-year federal consolidated plan for the upcoming fiscal years twenty-five through twenty-nine. Um, and we are looking for all the help that we can get on some, on feedback, uh specifically on California's housing, homelessness, community development challenges, barriers, and needs. And with that, we are asking folks to take our surveys. So we have two different surveys. We have a public-facing survey. So uh, you know, if you're a member of the general public, we have a survey for that. And then we also have a grantee survey for local governments, developers, nonprofits, uh cities, counties, or other entities. Uh, so I'm gonna put that in the chat now. And if you do work with certain communities and can promote the survey um for the public survey, we would also appreciate that. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Chelsea. All right, and so um on your current screen here, you see the um our uh stay in the know and sign up for our emails um at HCD. So the majority of you that have attended today probably received this notification uh for this um webinar now, how, through our list serve system, um where you already receive an announcement by email from our communications team. However, if you did not receive it this way, um you can go onto our website as shown on the screen and um and click on the email signup link. Um, and you can click on the link to provide that will provide on a slide, and it will take you directly to that page for signup. And you can also share this with anybody who also might benefit um from receiving our emails as well. Okay, next slide. Okay, you can also follow HCD on social media. Um, we are on Facebook, and we're on Twitter and LinkedIn. And so there are our um profile information here for all of those social platforms. Okay, next slide. And anybody interested in joining HCD, um we definitely encourage that. Um, and the information for how to um look for open jobs at HCD is is on the screen. And so you can go to the jobs.ca.gov link and click on Advanced Job Search. And from that point, you can search for the California Department of Housing and Community Development um for any open jobs at this time. And also to note, we offer um full-time telework options as well for many of our positions. And next slide. All right, and we'd like to acknowledge um everybody here, all of you, our stakeholders, our partners um that are joining this webinar, who participate in in many of our webinars that we conduct from uh anything from program office hours to NOFA workshops, to listening sessions and webinars on any new funding that is available. So we want to thank you to all of those folks and for taking our endless amount of surveys as well as for being here today. So um again, uh thank you for your ongoing particip- participation, uh feedback and attentiveness to what we are doing here in the Division of Federal Financial Assistance at HCD. And so we uh very much appreciate all of your engagement and support. Um, and so um if there's no other, um no other questions um or anything like that, um, we will, uh we will end this presentation. And everybody have a wonderful day.
Thank you, Tim. Thanks, everyone. Thanks for joining. Have a good day.